Greetings, I'll call the Concord School Committee meeting to order note that we are being recorded. And I would take a motion to move into executive session. For the Concord School Committee to move into executive session under purpose three of the open meeting law. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. To come back into public session at 6:30 PM.
So moved.
For a second, any discussion, then vote by roll call.
John's tonight.
About I?
Booth I.
Randy I.
Alright, we will join into executive session and be back soon. Good, well welcome, I will use this to recall the Concord School Committee meeting back into order. I will note here that we are being recorded and broadcast. Thank you all for being here, we have such a great crowd here. It's exciting to see kids with us, we love having kids join us. We have a couple of things, one thing to do first before we get to that, we have a public comment section, do we have any public comments? Any sheets, anyone have a public comment? Then great, we're moving efficiently already, we get to go right to recognitions. And I know that Mr. Cameron has brought us a team to share some information with us, so I'll call you all up here.
We're calling up, I believe Ms. Anderson, advisor is here as well, come on Ms. Anderson. The Middle School Student Council.
Alright.
Yes we can.
Do you want to come anyway, let's see how many people we have. Probably not enough seats for everybody, but you can all be over here, or I'll be over here, wherever you want to be, whatever's easiest. You can take some seats.
There you go.
Yeah, that's very kind of you. Oh, look at this.
There you go. So there you go.
This reminds me of last year when we took over.
I was gonna say, are you taking over again?
Flashing back.
Mr. Cameron has staged a takeover in the past.
So I'd like to introduce Ms. Anderson, who is the advisor of the brand new Concord Middle School Student Council. So we actually did not have a student council for a long as time at the middle school. Hard to find a middle school without a student council. So we're very proud of the work that both Molly McGee and Mary Anderson has done in bringing a student council to the middle school, which happened. We chartered this group about probably January or February of last year. And here they are, we have sixth, seventh, and eighth graders here. And we wanted to just talk a little bit about the new way that we're doing middle school at Concord Middle School. Wanted to give you all an opportunity to ask any questions of us.
That's great, love it. Did you wanna, did you wanna give us a little overview about what's new first?
Sure, you guys want to introduce yourselves first? And then if you want to just share a little bit about the first month of school. And if you're a seventh and eighth grader, maybe share what may be different, there's a lot of different at Concord Middle School. And then we talked as sixth graders about just how coming into one building is so different than those seventh and eighth graders and those up at the high school. So why don't we start here, can you introduce yourself and just share a little bit about the start of the year?
So, well my name is Santiago and I'm a sixth grader. I think that going all into one building, I don't really have much to compare it to because this is my first year of middle school. But I think that in comparison to elementary school, then I think that it's kind of nice going to all into one building.
Go ahead, keep going, we're just making sure there's space for all of you. We'll be right over here.
I think it's kind of nice going all into one building through all sort of one age level and it's just kind of nice being all in one grade. Because also you know everybody and you're not split, you might not, you're sure that you're not going to be split up with your friends.
Yeah, going along with that, I think it's a great opportunity.
Yeah, do you want to share who you are and what group you're in?
Yeah, my name is Santiago, I am a PB middle schooler. And I think it's a great idea that they put all the sixth graders into one school. Because not only you get to be with your friends, but you can also make new friends. And, and then you know next year that you're gonna be with them and then you grow alongside by side with new friends and your friends as a community.
I would like to add on his point is that back then, there was always a political thing that you either are Sanbornian or Peabody. Yeah, still, but it's just that the sixth graders don't have to be in that divide anymore. And it's that in the website, if you look up Concord Middle School, there's no divide in that anymore. And I think that really divided it and it's better if everyone knew as a group. Because if you're going to the high school with knowing everybody, then you would be more comfortable in going to the high school. Because if it's separated, you only know half of the kids, not the other half. So that's also an additional bonus.
You want to share who you are?
Um, I'm, I'm from the, I'm an eighth grader, I used to be a Peabody. Where they would know the whole store.
No one knows, they know everything.
So we're sorry it took the adults so long to figure this out.
You guys have it all figured out here, absolutely.
We figured it out, there were just too many.
And to be honest, it wasn't that bad, the change. It wa, the big, the big.
That's what we were going for.
Yeah. A lot of people got used to it, it wasn't as bad as a lot of people thought, that's my.
And tell us about the building, because the building got a little bit of a spruce up, did it not? Can you tell us about?
Can you keep going around, we want to hear from everybody too.
Yeah, and have everybody introduce themselves, like we might introduce ourselves too, because we're so unhappy you're here. But first, more about, more about life at the middle school.
Darcy, you want to go?
Sure.
Stella?
No, you can go.
It's fine.
Okay. Life at the middle school is complicated, to say the least. There's positives and there's negatives, but let's just please focus on the positives, or we'll move into an entirely different discussion. Like Maya and I was at Peabody for the first two years of my Pmi middle school life. And when I moved to Sanborn, it wasn't actually that stressful, I mean, I did get lost the occasional like three times a day. But I think it's like a good change, sometimes change can be good and bad. But this move has kind of changed my mind, which is basically impossible to do. That change, that this change that happened can be good. And my name's Stella, by the way, I'm an eighth grader.
Almost as we rehearsed.
So I'm thirsty, Peter Mills, and I'm an eighth grader at Sanborn, obviously. And I think that the middle school kind of, although it was kind of hard to, like the amount of people that came in, so it's just all at once. It wasn't like you were prepared for the move, because the eighth grade didn't know when they were coming into sixth grade that we were gonna go to Sanborn. So it was like a little weird all of a sudden to hear that, oh wow, this big move. I feel like it was definitely talked about a lot throughout my seventh grade year. But I feel like we kind of made it a huge thing, when in reality, once we got to the situation, it didn't really change too much. There were more people and there were more like people to meet and friends to meet, I guess you could say. But it didn't feel like, oh, this huge thing, this is so stressful, once we got to the situation.
So you have three students who came in their sixth grade year believing that puberty was gonna be, you know, their home school for three years. So, you know, Darcy, I felt did a great job honoring the fact that, you know, we got students involved in this conversation early in their seventh grade year. Which was right around this time last year.
Yeah, and you're the group that, the current eighth graders who were at Peabody last year. Are the ones who had the most transition to deal with here, because you'd been there for two years and formed your identity there. So it speaks a lot to all of you eighth graders for how you transitioned also. Let's keep going around.
Yeah, I'm Alex, I'm an eighth grader, I was also at puberty last year, so. Yeah, I think, honestly, when I first heard about it, I was like dead set against it, and now that I've gone through it.
I remember.
So she doesn't quite about that.
But like I feel like as I kind of went through it, it was not, it was not as bad as I thought, there were some bumps. But huge props to Mr. Cameron and all the administration for working very hard to sort all that out. And I, it's nice, I, I've made some new friends and I also feel like it'll be nice going into the high school, knowing twice as many people.
Cole. How you doing?
As you heard, I'm Cole, I'm a seventh grader. I feel like I'm the only one here who actually went to Peabody, I mean to Sanborn last year.
I did, hello.
Just came in, it's not good.
Oh, okay, but anyway, oh, yeah. I feel like it would be an advantage to know everybody from both the schools going into high school, like they said. But it's also been quite crowded in the halls now. We hardly have enough space for people, I know a few people who like were assigned to the same locker. Instead of having their own, so that was a bit of a trouble to figure out, but yeah, it's been nice. We've gotten to know each other, everybody settled in nice, so yeah.
Good news. If you know anybody sharing a locker, we have extra lockers, so.
Oh, I think we got, we got.
Yeah, we should be able to reconcile that.
That's good.
Um, so my name is Felicity and I'm a seventh grader and last year I did go to Sanborn. So I think that, well, um, when I was in fifth grade and we were all talking about like going to separate, like to separate middle schools like Peabody and Sanborn, we were all kind of like, there was a lot of drama. And everyone was like, they were like, no, I want to be with my friends. And I don't want to like just be all alone, even though technically you're not alone, there are people that you know, you just like don't like them. But I think that it is also good, like now that everyone's together, like you know every, you know a lot more people, like everyone else has said. There are some people from like different elementary schools that I never knew before and like I made a lot of new friends already and it's nice, yeah. No, it is a bit crowded, like Cole said.
And the eighth graders too, I think, you know, one of the conversations that we're currently having, because you know, as members of the student council, we appreciate the fact that when there's a problem, we need to be a part of the solution, need to put forward some ideas. So we're in active conversations about a crowded place, which is eighth grade lunch, what that looks like. Bryce was over, the new food service director, was over at Sanborn today doing some observations and being a part of that conversation as well. And we're being very creative about, you know, that all eighth grade lunch. That as much as I think some students are really enjoying the fact that they definitely get, get to see their friends and be with their friends, that's a packed area. You know, and it's a reason to believe that, you know, we do in fact need a new school.
We will continue to work on that.
Yeah, we should work on that.
Oh, let's work on that. So I have a question, I would love to know as a new student council, what are the things that you guys as students are most excited about working on as the student council? Oh my goodness, I love it, all over, let's start here.
Well, I think that I would, I like the idea that we're going to be able to plan fun events for the students to attend. Because I think that it's kind of nice to be able to be with your friends, but also escape kind of all the stress and all the classes and stuff. And, but you still get to be with your friends and it's fun, so I think that having those events is gonna be really fun and I'm, I'm happy that I can be a part of planning that.
Well, you guys are helping us, we talk about student wellness and, and students feeling connected and the fact that you guys are starting to plan events. That helps with that exact issue, decreasing stress and everything is, is wonderful, we love to hear it, it's great. You wanted to add to that?
Yeah, along with that, I think it's for all the sixth graders and seventh graders. It all, it's kind of cool that we get to experience, all of us together, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to share ideas with everybody. And no matter if it, sometimes it sounds impossible, we can sometimes do what we can possible.
That is a lesson we should all remember.
And other communities.
That's great, I think down here, it's Stella, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, other communities, Stella, other communities that have an all sixth grade building, they did share with us. You know, keep an eye on the sixth graders being involved in extracurricular activities.
Yes.
Yes.
You know, and this is proof positive that, you know, our first student council meeting, which is open every meeting. You know, we have a good, like forty or so students there and there's a good mix of sixth graders, seventh graders.
The forty students at the first round.
Yeah, the first one.
And I think there's, I think there's even maybe the most amount of sixth graders, which is really cool this year because I feel like it's really nice.
Oh, that's fantastic.
I think, I don't know if this is just because of like the move or anything that happened, but I feel like this year's sixth graders also, I've seen like a lot more sixth graders coming to extracurricular activities.
That's excellent.
And maybe because.
Feeling empowered.
Maybe being all together and having new friends and stuff to go to.
That's excellent. That's really neat to hear.
I'd like to say it's something done, but good luck, good fortune. And it says a lot about the sixth grade class that's come, that came in.
That's terrific.
Cole, were you gonna add something?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's been nice actually having students get a voice on what's gonna happen since the student, uh, coun, council.
That's what you are.
Yeah, we have power, so we can actually influence the decisions that are happening around our educational lives. So it's nice that we're able to put some influence on that, because as hard as adults try, they never know everything that's happening with the students, so.
That's very true.
That's true.
Very true, Cole.
Very good. That's great. Stella, you wanted to add something that you were looking forward to.
Excuse me, um, I know a lot about the reconfiguration, but also being a part of a community. Because when I first moved here, I moved here from New York. And when I moved here, I was just beginning sixth grade and I didn't know a soul. I was very lonely and very scared. But the more that the fear inside of you, oh god, this is dark, really grows, the more you can try, the more your brain seeks out the people who hold the light. And so it's kind of like, I'm right, it's racial. And so integration is very difficult, especially in our preteens slash teens, because we just we just, um, it's kind of difficult to explain, but the easiest words that I can find are, we just, excuse me, we just put we just put expectations, not expectations, like stereotypes about others. Like when I first moved here from Peabody, I was really terrified of going to Sanborn, because I was like, oh god, is this really happening? Because I've heard so much drama about the Peabody versus Sanborn in the past three years that I've been in middle school. But when I actually got there, it actually isn't that bad.
Great.
This is so great, can't tell you.
Um, so probably one thing I'm really looking forward to about student council is I like being able to like problem solve and I like being able to like work through like problem solving myself, instead of like going like whining to the adults and asking them to do everything for me. Like I get to have a hand and I get to like, you know, help lead, like making the change happen, like figuring out what the problem is, figuring out what we can do, what the solution is, and then like actually going forward with it, like I like being able to lead in that. And then the other thing is I want, it's nice that I'm able to like meet a bunch of younger students, because one of, um, the current ninth grade class, I had a lot of close friends in that class and like that was one of my fondest memories, is like sixth and seventh graders, is these older kids who I really looked up to. And I'd like to try to be that for some of the younger kids at the middle school now.
Great.
What great connections, you guys are amazing, you're so well fucking on, just in awe.
Looks like a great student council, I think you're gonna have a good year, everybody, so.
Yeah, this is just a small subset of our group. And we already have some, some awesome initiatives going and I'm really hoping that, I feel like I've heard this from you guys, that you're, you are feeling like you have a voice and that we are hearing you and, and then we're taking some action. Like the, the eighth grade focus group for lunch, that's already met once, I think, right? So, so you guys are gonna be part of the solution.
Great.
That's terrific.
Alright.
Before we wrap up our things, can I just point out something that I think we can learn from you all? I've noticed several of you doing this and I think that's, I agree with what you're saying, right? And I love that, I think it's something we could use in our school committee sometimes, right? It's a, it's a sign to say, I agree with what you're saying and I don't need to interrupt it, but I'm on the same page with you and I love it and I think we should adopt it, thank you.
That's great.
You all are amazing, thank you so much for coming to share what you're doing.
Yes, really appreciate it, and pass it along to everybody who could join us.
Yes.
What else would?
And we're excited to hear about what you do on this student council.
Yep, definitely.
All the power to you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Give you all your seats back.
There's nowhere to go.
I know, who's up next, because that's what you have to call them.
Make us one.
Oh no, it's Maya Rar. Wow, we'll let everybody get out. Oh my goodness, so impressive, that's so neat to hear what they're doing, I love it. Yeah, I'm the one who has to follow that, because now we have a quick chair's report. The good news is I don't have too much to report on, I really wanted to touch on this past weekend. I know this is not just a Concord Public School thing, but it's something that both districts were involved in. Most people know about the Kicks for Cancer Weekend that happened. And I just wanted to mention it partially as the Concord School's meeting, partially because I was very involved with it. But this weekend hosted the Kicks for Cancer Weekend, which included the Pink Dance at the high school, Kicks for Cancer soccer games on Saturday, Sticks for Cancer field hockey games on Saturday, and the Mighty Moose 5K on Sunday. And the entire weekend, aside from being an amazing fundraising effort, was also just an incredible community experience. And I think all the students who were involved, I saw there were an amazing number of high school students volunteering to help, but also middle school students volunteering to help, elementary and middle school students and high schoolers running the race on Sunday. I know that in terms of numbers, the, the, we raised over $200,000. That's even, actually almost $200,000 on Sunday and a lot on Saturday, I don't know the numbers for Saturday, but it was way up there also. So an incredible amount of money raised for ovarian cancer research. And also just a truly inspirational weekend, seeing the community come together for something like this, both the experience and the fundraising. So I just wanted to, to mention that and give a shout out to all of our students who were involved in it, because they really, really represented us very well. It was, it was great to see. So that's all I had, were there any other, any leads on reports, we did this a week ago, so I don't know that there's much more.
I have none, I would simply echo what you say, or I should do this. And say that the community pride was palpable the whole weekend.
It was, all weekend, everywhere through town. Any others?
So I watched the FinCom, I will admit that I didn't attend in person. So there was a little bit of discussion about surplusing and monetizing Peabody, which is an important thing to discuss, but I don't think we'll be doing that next year, so.
Right. We're not quite there yet, we'll do our best.
And then I think they mentioned they're gonna have a public forum on sustainability November 7th. So more to come on that, I think. Also, there mentioned, I don't know, the planning board wants to have a joint meeting with the FinCom and the school committee to discuss the articles they're moving, I don't know if anybody's reached out to us.
They reached out to me and I've been looking for guidance from Elizabeth Hughes as to what structure and format, whether it's all I got the feeling it wasn't the whole committee and we, she's still navigating the process as far as I last knew. So I'll pass more along once I know.
Okay. And then also, I don't think there was discussed in the meeting, but they sent a memo to the select board, the chair, about setting up a fund for the middle school. From free cash.
Right.
We were gonna mention that.
A stabilization fund.
Okay.
Middle school.
That's it.
Great, thank you, thanks for being with us. Any others? Okay, we go to, correspondence, I actually didn't have any Concord specific, full committee correspondence over the past week, so nothing there. So then we can jump into some good discussions. First, we're gonna hear about the WestEd review regarding the integrated preschool.
Yeah, so I'll introduce our new early childhood coordinator, which is one of the recommendations. They all took it to heart of it. Janet O'Shea is here to talk you through the highlights of the report. We did have the draft of the report in late, late, late spring. So you'll hear we jumped right into some of it. She'll talk through both what they, what they documented, validated, and the recommendations, I think.
Okay, alright, so Erin's gonna help me here with, this is the WestEd report that's over here on the screen. So can you go to page four? So we did a review of the whole special ed department last year and then they decided to have WestEd, which is an educational consulting firm, come and do a review of the preschool program. So we, we hired Sylvia Duruva to come in and she did an extensive interview with our staff and some focus groups. So as parent group, there was, she met with all the teachers, the tutors, the therapists. And then they did observations of our program and then they came up with this report. Okay, I'm just gonna go over it briefly here. And really what she was looking for is, you know, how is our program servicing kids with special needs? You know, are, are we able to service all the kids here in the building, are we sending kids elsewhere? And, you know, what kinds of services, additional services might be needed at this time. So you can move to page six, actually. That's the background of the program. Don't hold on, seven, some of this stuff is just, how about page eight, that sounds like. Some things we can talk about here. So Sylvia, in her report, she talked about different things, one of them was, well, again, let me see, I'm sorry, the observations. So she used a checklist called the Desire Results Developmental Profile, which looked at a lot of school readiness measures. And she went into, at that point, we had two full-time classrooms and two teachers were teaching half-day programs. And she observed the classrooms, looking at a lot of different things, like the physical space of the classroom, behaviors of the children in the classroom, the mode of delivery of instruction, and also how the tutors supported the teachers in the classroom. Okay, and if you want to jump in with any questions as I go over this, feel free. So if you look at page nine, just to give you an idea, all these different things, you know, they just sort of scored if they saw, you know, like a teacher engaging a child's curiosity and initiative in learning, you know, they recorded that. So that particular one, you know, that she saw that five times, so 83%. Some of the things she didn't see, it doesn't necessarily mean it's not happening in the preschool program, it's just that that's not what she observed. So you can look and take a look, there's a lot of social emotional development criteria that she was looking at, and language and literacy development, and self-regulation. So those are all things that we are dealing with at the preschool every day. So the observation summary on page 11. She noted that teachers and tutors were observed utilizing the UDL principles of multiple means of engagement by recruiting interest and providing choice in a safe, distraction-free environment. Overall, they were really impressed with what they saw. Kids were working at tables, we have what's called table time, and they're moving around throughout the day, they're doing all kinds of different activities. They have choice in that, but they also are working on transitions. And they felt that the tutors were doing a great job in assisting the teachers, so that the teachers had time to work with the more involved kids and the tutors could help out with some of the community kids and some of the, you know, less disabled children in the classroom. So they were impressed by that. And, let's see. If I read all of this, it would take me like four hours, so just summarizing. On page 14. WestEd reported that they felt our staff was unbelievable, that's nice. That we used high language and that we, our staff is frequently interacting with students and moving around the room encouraging students. As you can imagine, preschool is a pretty active environment and, you know, there's not a whole lot of sitting, everyone needs to be moving around, because those guys are moving around. She felt that it was a real team approach and that the tutors and the teachers really worked well together as a team. And I've seen this myself, when I've gone in to observe the classrooms, it's like, it's like clockwork. I mean, the teachers do such a great job in training the tutors to know exactly what to do, and even the kids. So I, I mean, I'll give an example and, you know, I was doing So I mean, I'll give an example, and, you know, I was doing an observation in Christine Brown's class last spring, and the kids were transitioning from one activity to another. And she rang a little bell, and all these preschoolers got up, and they just walked to the table. And it wasn't like the next one. They had a sequence of like blue, yellow, green, green, yeah. I was like, what just happened? She goes, oh, they just know what to do. So they saw that at WestEd. So I have to say, that's a pretty impressive skill because you don't see that in too many preschool environments. So anyways, they were impressed. They thought it was a very rich climate and culture, and they described it as a well-oiled machine, no matter what class. So we were pretty pleased with this. She felt that they provided differentiated instruction to all kids because we have a wide range of abilities in the class. Half the class are what we call community students, who are just, they send them to preschool just like you would send them to any private preschool in town. They pay tuition to us. And then the other half of the class are kids with some type of documented special need, which could be anything from some type of a medical condition to speech and language delay to a really significant diagnosis or delay. Okay? So there's a lot of kids that they're reaching, and they felt they did a really great job of differentiating instruction. And I do see that with our teachers every day. So I think they're right. They do a good job of that. Page 15. They also met with the parent focus group, which was made up of three students who have children who have special needs and one who has a community student in the program. The parents were pretty happy with the program and felt that they were very supported by the teachers, and it was a very supportive community. They felt that the teachers went above and beyond to communicate with them about their children, and even if their child was in there as a community student, if there were issues, like for instance, an articulation delay or some type of fine motor delay, that was addressed. So we had very positive reports from the parents. And actually, the fact that we didn't get like 100 parents coming out, we felt was kind of positive that they felt like things were going pretty well. So parents reported that students who have transitioned to the program have done well in elementary school, and they felt it was a successful transition to kindergarten. Let's see, page 16. The strengths of the program, the parents felt, with a low staff-to-student ratio. We typically have about 12 kids in a class with one teacher, who's a certified special educator, and two tutors in the classroom. And then there may also be a teaching assistant if we have a child that needs a one-to-one. Okay? But it's typically three to four adults and 12 kids, which sounds like a lot of adults. But if you want preschoolers to be able to do all the things we have them do all day, you need a lot of, a lot of help there. So parents were happy with that. They felt that we needed to have a full-time preschool director. And at that point, I was acting as the interim director, early childhood coordinator, whatever we want to call it, at the time. And then we finalized that at the end of the year. So I'm happy to be in charge of the preschool program now, and I think it's working out pretty well. The tutors met with WestEd, and they felt that it was a very supportive environment, that they were part of the teaching and the planning. They felt they wanted more professional development. Some of them are being trained in applied behavioral analysis, and they're supervised by our district board-certified behavior analyst. And they, they're getting training from her. They'd like a little bit more training with that, and maybe some certification, so we're working on that right now. We're also including the tutors in some of our professional development activities based on this report. Page 17. One of the focus groups was the therapists, which is made up of the physical therapists, the occupational therapists, and the speech and language therapists that work for the program. They also felt that it was a strong program and that there needed to be somebody in charge, and they felt that they needed a little bit more professional development because we're getting more and more challenging cases. We're seeing a lot of kids with, you know, some different types of serious diagnoses, and we're being asked to adapt the environment for a lot of kids that have some significant physical needs, medical needs, and learning needs. So we did, we took care of this too. We hired a developmental pediatrician, who is coming to meet with us every other month, and he's providing professional development. We're taking one of our students, and we're conferencing that student. We're talking to the parents before and involving them in the process as well. And we're involving both the teachers and the tutors and the therapists in that. So our first meeting was last Friday, and people thought it was great. So it's working out. And let's see. We went over the professional development. Anyone have any questions so far?
I do have a few.
Okay.
Yeah. First of all, I think I speak for all of us when I say thanks for taking on this role.
Oh, you're welcome. Yes.
I love it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
In no particular order necessarily, I've got a few notes. I did read the draft.
Oh, great. Thanks.
More recent one. Some of the, some of the data about teacher approaches is, in fact, very small snapshots. So I'm assuming we don't make too much of it and try to make that too interpretive, but rather say that it is indeed just snapshots. 0% showing on a particular approach that didn't get seen doesn't mean much.
Right. It just means that at that time, that's not something that they observed.
Notwithstanding all of that, did any of that data point out to you any place where you need to put more or less emphasis in terms of teacher support, teacher coaching, promoting different effective approaches? Or was it, or was it too scattered to do that?
I think, I think it was a little scattered, and I do think that all of the areas that they looked at, particularly the social, emotional development and the language and literacy development, I think those are real strong points of our program. So when there were pieces that maybe they didn't see during a particular observation, I wasn't concerned that that's not happening because that's really the focus of what they do every day, is social problem solving with kids and teaching social skills and play skills, and a lot of it's done through play. And also, our language literacy component of the program is really strong. They have thematic units that the teachers use, and they have vocabulary with every unit, and all the therapists reinforced it. So for instance, if they're working on the farm, for instance, there's a whole list of words, and you may go to physical therapy, and you're working on those words in physical therapy with physical therapists because the activities that she's doing have to do with the farm. So, you know, they really carry it over, which I think is that, you know, multimodality types of teaching that works well with preschoolers and also obviously kids with special needs. So I feel like they do a great job with that type of thing.
I was very heartened by the positive responses that the observer or observers got from the tutors. And you talk about working on things like their request for more ABA training. Can you tell us a little bit more about where that is in a process of deciding what to do and what can be done?
I came to Concord five years ago, and I was the school psychologist and the team chair for the program. And at that point, we were using an outside agency for any type of applied behavioral analysis that we were doing. And we did have a number of students that needed that type of service, but we didn't have anybody in the district that could provide that. So we hired BCBA and Elizabeth Fiddler, who came on originally just to help with the preschool, but now that's expanded to other parts of the district. And she did a great job with kind of bringing, you know, ABA into our program. At that point, I think people were a little nervous about it, and we weren't doing it as much in the program. So, and Elizabeth has a very developmental approach, which was different than some of the private agencies that we were using. So everything she did was really preschool-oriented. So she was doing a behavior program for a kid that was really into like vehicles. You know, she would make this very visually exciting board, and it would have like an airplane and a train and a race car. And, you know, the kid was working towards those three things and then getting an award, a reward. And so she really did a great job in making it, you know, preschool appropriate, which has been kind of a challenge for some ABA therapists that work with a wide age group. So then we started training the tutors to provide some of the ABA services, like what's called direct trials, where some children who are on the autistic spectrum need to learn language by kind of going over things again and again and again. So she worked with, first it was one tutor, and then two, now it's three, in teaching them how to do direct trials with kids, and then she meets with them weekly. So what we are working on is, we're still going to do that, and she's still supervising them, but we're going to try to make it more formal because there's a ABA therapist type of certification that you can get, and Elizabeth is able to do that. She just needs to work on the program. So it's in place. It's just we're, we're tightening that up.
It was very encouraging. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I might have another question or two for later parts of the report that you haven't gotten.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. You're welcome. Thank you. So let's see, what are we on? Page, we're almost at the end here. Oh, well, two other things that I think we touched on, well, three things. One was, one of the questions, this was actually one of the questions that I had, that I talked to WestEd about, was making, we didn't really have any type of policy for low-income families. So we would get kids that were from low-income families in Concord, and they really, we didn't have anything that said like, well, you qualify for free tuition or sliding scale or anything like that. And so sometimes the kids were on IEPs, and they, the program was recommended, so they came in through that way. But sometimes we had kids that really could benefit from the program, but they didn't have a way of coming. So I felt that that was something that needed to be addressed. So Lori and I talked about it, and we're using like the school lunch. Why, that was so simple. Why didn't we think of that? So now we're doing that. So we have a couple of families that are attending the program, and they're not paying tuition, which I think is great because those kids really need that edge, and they'll be well-prepared when they go visit all our elementary principals in a couple of years. Another thing that we're working on, we're seeing a lot of English language learners in the preschool. And we actually had a class last year that was about, I want to say about 40% of the class, the kids spoke another language. And a lot of different languages, a lot of Arabic, Portuguese, Mandarin, some Indian dialects. I mean, it's not Spanish, okay? So those of us that took all that Spanish, that's not really helping these kids. Just say no. So that's something that I think as a team, the preschool team feels like we want to kind of work on, is how to help these families because, you know, it's been challenging. We found out that Google Translator doesn't really work that well. And some of the families have said, don't even do that. Just send me the email in English. And they, you know, find somebody to translate it. So we've been really fine-tuning, like, how do we communicate with our families that are, you know, speaking Mandarin, that are speaking Arabic? And without having to get a translator every single time, we have an interaction with them. So we're working on that. We, you know, started, instead of, you know, some of these kids are referred for speech and language evaluations at an alarming rate, and it's not always that they have a language delay. It's that they're, they're not English speakers.
Right.
One thing, they're very difficult to assess because we're looking at standardized data that's normed on kids who've always been exposed to English, so you really can't even compare them. So our speech people have been running an ELL group with some kids and just, you know, working on, you know, storytelling and vocabulary and that type of thing. So we're trying to work on ways to help that population because it's growing here in Concord. And if, you know, you haven't seen it at the elementary level, which I'm sure you have, the high school, it's coming because we have, we have a lot, a lot of those families. So, yeah, so that's one of the things that we are working on. I mean, we're all, you know, SEI-trained, but, you know, I think we all need to just get a little bit more confidence and keep working on what are the best ways to serve our families. Yeah. And then the other one is transportation. That's something that we're trying to fine-tune. And just to be honest with you, it's sort of like this word-of-mouth thing that goes around, that people hear one child might be getting transportation to preschool, and then they want to have transportation for their special needs child. And it's been, we're trying to be really conscious of not being wasteful of the district's resources, but also helping families that need transportation to get their kid to school. One of the recommendations was that I reach out to a number of districts and ask them what they're doing about this. And we're transporting a lot more kids than they are. So we, that's one of the things I'm working with Ruth Grooby on this year is, you know, how do we fine-tune that so that we're not spending so much money transporting preschoolers? So more to come on that.
Thank you for looking into it. We appreciate it.
I don't know. I'll try. And that's basically it. I want to see if I covered all the recommendations on page 21 of the recommendations. One was to add an additional full-day classroom. We're finding that it's hard to get community kids for our half-day program because we don't have like an extended program where all the other preschools, you can say, oh, today I want, you know, little Johnny to stay till 3 o'clock. And they say, oh, okay, well, we'll just charge you this money. And we can't do that because we're not a childcare center. So parents are having a hard time with the 9 to 11:30, 12:30 to 3:00 program. So we, but they like the full day. So we opened up another full day. And we also have an increasing number of kids that really require a full-day program just because of the level of their needs. So we did do that. We also changed the ending time for our full day. We're not really sure why it was at 2:30. Lori said, why is it at 2:30? I go, I don't know. That's a good question, Lori.
If it's 3 o'clock, they can all ride the same van to home.
Right. So I said, okay, let's change it. So that was simple, but that's made things easier for case transportation. So we did that. And professional development, we're working on that. We're also, for the first time, the preschool's going to participate in the district-wide professional development, which we've never been able to do because we don't have Tuesday afternoons off. We have our planning time on Fridays. So we're going to do that on three Tuesday afternoons this year, so that's great.
That's awesome.
And we brought on, as I mentioned before.
I can't understand how huge that is, that we've been able to incorporate them into that.
Well, that was another one too. They said, why can't we do that?
I know.
And then we just.
They just go home half-day for three Tuesday.
Right. Then we just didn't.
Suddenly we had it right.
So profound problem solving.
Yeah, step back from it.
Yeah, so, and then we're also, as I mentioned, have Dr. Eric Von Haan. He's a very well-known developmental pediatrician from Tufts coming to meet with us. And he's, he seems to be great. Let's see. I think that's most of it. Some of the things we didn't feel were necessary. One of them was provide an additional tutor that can act as a full-time floater. I'll be honest with you, we have a lot of staff here at the preschool. I mean, we need a lot of staff, but we don't need anymore. We're good.
Nice comment.
You know, we're. It's very important. I think it's all right. So we didn't feel that was really necessary right now. Improve the kindergarten transition process, collaborating between the preschool and the elementary schools. You know, we, we do have, when I read this, I was like, we do have a kindergarten transition process. So I sort of didn't get the sense that they understood that. But, you know, we'll try to fine-tune, working with the elementary schools. We do that, right, Angel?
Yeah.
Every year. The truth is, when I was with the high school staff this afternoon, as they work on their transition process, you can never, you can always make it better. So I think that's really.
But we do meet on every kid. We involve the families. We meet with, you know, the staff at the incoming school, and we share a lot of information. So we'll talk about how to make that better, but I think we're doing that. And they talked about creating a document explaining the referral and evaluation process to include in the handbook. We're going to do that for next year. Let's see, what else? Oh, just supporting the ELLs. We're doing that. Transportation and low income. So we really have touched on all of the recommendations from this report, and some are in process, but like I said, we just got this at the end of June, so.
Excellent. Amazing.
That's amazing. I mean, I had read through it in advance too and was looking forward to hearing what you were thinking about doing about all of these things and to have you tell us about what you've already done about so many of them. It's amazing. That's great.
Yeah, well, thanks. Yeah, we're getting there.
Yeah, thank you. Were there other questions? Do you still have more questions, Cor?
No, you anticipated them. But I will note that their words, not yours, 22. Recognize the school as its own school rather than a program to improve community understanding of the purpose of the school. So I'm not sure if that's exactly how you would have framed it, but to the extent that's a useful goal, I hope that tonight's visit and more public dialogue about what you're doing and what your colleagues are doing and the successes of the kids in the program help serve that end.
Yeah, and I don't, maybe Lori can speak to that a little bit because I'm not sure. You know, it's considered like a service center on paper type of thing. you know, it's considered like a service center on paper type of thing.
I consider school, I mean, we've really kind of stepped back. And semantics can be very powerful. And feedback from the preschool was once a sense of disenfranchisement. And really hearing that right from the minute I walked in, you know, identity of who they are and the value they add here. And I think we've just really stepped, and the benefit I had, I'd run preschools in my elementary leadership experience, so I knew and was super familiar with the incredible work they were doing. Even more impressed as I got to know exactly what this group is doing. And I think we've just been able to make them feel part of the pre-K-12 schools. Simple things like calling them.
Like saying pre-K.
Like saying.
Like continuing to say pre-K through twelve. We, some of this, we talked a lot about with CTA during bargaining. And the contract, even identifying them as part of the contract. Even though the contract covered them, it did include them in the pre-K to eight language. The PD part, they really had not been part of any planned professional development, whether at a big picture or individual to what they needed. And saying, yes, of course you need that. And then to look at the outcomes they're getting on top of it all is just astonishing. So a lot of it was really on the level of making them feel connected and part of the district and valued. And I think we've come a long way, I think, based on the feedback I hear from them.
Yeah, they feel much better. I just think they felt like kind of a stepchild of the. I think that's on PC to say, but they felt like everyone forgot about them. And they do work really hard. And now, you know, I think they feel much more included, so it's good. And we are listed as a school on the website, yes.
Well, I just thought the last sentence in the reflections had said, or one of the paragraphs had said, everyone works together as a team to meet each child's individual needs through culture, community, and commitment to each other and every child. And I think.
That's our goal.
I mean, and then, you know, the use words such as stellar and very successful, so. But I appreciate that you didn't just say, well, you know, the summaries of this, so we're good. You know, you went through in detail and looked at all the recommendations, so I really appreciate that.
Well, thanks.
Thank you so much for coming and sharing this.
Oh, thank you.
Very valuable.
Alright, anytime you want to visit.
Alright.
Right, I think Cora came, didn't you come one night? Do I open house a couple of years ago?
It was out front here.
Yeah.
I'll take you up on that one.
Alright, sounds good.
Love it, no. Alright, so thanks for being here, Janet. Great, and now we get to move up the age ladder a little bit. And we are from the elementary schools and then the middle school. So tonight, we finally get to look at school improvement plans, which we're very much looking forward to. Are we going in this order here, or did you guys have something?
Alphabetically, within the elementary.
Alright, then we'll.
Can we all come out together?
Absolutely, come on.
And what I'm gonna ask is, as you come up, yeah, I'd like you to bring the assistant principals, so I can introduce them all, and I'll make sure Naomi gets introduced as well. First of all, we're gonna start with an incredible thank you, because the team of people you're about to meet across the four schools is astonishingly rich and deep. And we're already very aware of the difference, so the support for that mattered greatly.
I was gonna say, do you want to pull chairs over? You good?
So I'll turn it over, go ahead, Matt, I'll let you start the introductions.
Dr. Chris Price is Willard School Assistant Principal, also acting as math coordinator. And I need to tell you how absolutely thrilled and every single day that you founded within the budget to be able to support me and us with someone who we can deliberate with, who can share the load with, and makes us better. Makes us be able to do our job well, so thank you for that.
I'm Naomi Crick, I think I've met all of you at this point. I just finished my first full month as principal at Alcott. And Judy Olson is a main reason why I have made it. Every time someone asks me a question, how's your transition going? I can actually say, it's going really well, because you have all the knowledge. But she also is serving as the math curriculum specialist and newly appointed assistant principal.
So we morphed all these roles, so they're doing bits of what they were doing and what the principals need of them, so. We can talk on that as much as you want, or as long as you want.
Talk about creativity, I love it.
Good evening, I'm Angel Charles, Principal of Thoreau. And I am so pleased to introduce all of you, to a familiar face, I believe. Sue Howard has been our instructional technology specialist for many, many, many years. Something like that. But she has slid effortlessly into my right hand. And I have to say, this, starting my fifth year at Thoreau, this has been by far the smoothest start that we've had so far. It's just wonderful to have someone to be able to confide in, to share the work in, to just bounce ideas off, so. Grateful to you, thank you.
Great. So you want to talk us through the plans?
Yeah.
Sure. Are you standing for that too?
Yeah, do you want us to sit or stand?
Whatever you're comfortable with. We can move more chairs over here, you can sit at the table.
Yeah, whoever's presenting maybe could stand, and the rest of you staying at the tables, and you can swap off.
Okay, are we alphabetical?
You are.
However you want to do it.
It's yawned that way, so.
So, I'm in this unique position of presenting a plan that was in its sort of development before I came on, and I am executing it myself now. I've had a decent amount of time to talk to people, to talk to my SAC, to talk to my teachers in leadership roles, to really understand sort of what the goals of the improvement plan are. So I feel like I can actually really talk through what it is we're trying to accomplish this year. So our improvement, I mean, all of our improvement has aligned with the district's strategic objectives. So within strategic objective one, which is multiple, you know, which is multiple paths to success, we have at Alcott four initiatives that sort of fall under that umbrella. And the first is to really look and strengthen our RTI process. So to really make sure that our progress monitoring is really robust. We have a lot of things in place, we have interventions, we have really good core instruction. But what we want to focus on is making sure that the progress monitoring piece is really robust. And so, you know, what data are we collecting? How are we using it to make decisions about supporting student learning? And then what are we doing it with that data? And to support students if students are not responding to the interventions that we're putting in place. And so we're doing that by trying to align our teams, to make sure that there's special education staff on all the grade-level teams. They, by nature of our structure, they are a part of the team, but aren't always at the planning meetings. So we're trying to look at some of this new one-hundred minutes to make sure that that alignment is there, so that we have voices from all sort of people with different areas of expertise contributing to the problem solving. The other thing that we're doing, and I think this is actually consistent across the schools, is really looking at how we continue improving our teaching of writing to students. Last year, we adopted not a new writing curriculum, but the newest version of the Lucy Hawkins Writing Curriculum. And so teachers are familiar with that, they practiced rolling out one unit. And we're sort of gradually increasing the units that we're rolling out and making sure that everyone has the same language and is using the same rubrics. So that is a piece of our plan. And then we're also looking at ways to make sure that instruction across the school is really engaging and innovative, and there's a couple of ways we're doing that. One, myself and another teacher are serving on the Innovative Learning Practices Committee led by Kristen, and so we're participating in that and just actually learning ourselves, like, what do we define as innovative practice? And figuring out how we want to bring that to the broader community. And then, and then, again, this is a continuation of work that already started last year, but all the grade-level teams started to look at how to make some of their units a little more interdisciplinary. It goes a little bit to what Janet was saying about sort of project-based learning and having things be really cross-curricular. And so as an example of some of the completed units that are going to be implemented this year, grade three developed an interdisciplinary Wampanoag unit, grade four did a whole unit on immigration, and grade five has a revolution unit. And then also related to innovative practices, for the first time, our fifth-grade students and teachers are gonna participate in reverses and revolutions this year. We're doing it in the spring, I think largely to give me a little bit of time to dip my toes in the water, so that I can support with that effectively. And that's a completely innovative way of approaching teaching and learning. And so I think that aligns with this as well. And then a really big, a really big piece of strategic objective one, which also could and does fall into strategic objective two around well-being, is that we are at Alcott developing a program for students with significant emotional disabilities. And so it's a brand-new program, and we're sort of visioning it as we go. So we're trying to figure out, how do we support the needs of the students who are there in the program right now? And then how do we think further ahead? What do we want the program to look like? You know, what do we need to do so that we can support students with these really significant disabilities in the social-emotional realm? And so, you know, it falls under, it falls under strategic objective one, because it's definitely a tiered support, to support some of our students with more significant disabilities. But it aligns really closely with the strategic objective around well-being as well, because it is a program designed to help kids with really significant social-emotional needs. Which brings me to the second section of the action plan, which are our action items aligned with the district's priorities around well-being. So the first one is just to make sure that everyone, that all classroom teachers, support staff, specialists are all sort of speaking the same language and implementing the same tier-one practices to support student well-being. We have a lot of things in place, some things have been piloted in small areas. And so we're looking to take things that are sort of, things that have been really effective that we can make larger scale, to make them more larger scale. So everyone implements Open Circle, but we have a few new teachers who need to be trained in that. Everyone, so, and then we're also implementing Zones of Regulation, which is a curriculum to help kids identify their emotions and figure out how to actually regulate their emotions. It's something that we're starting. We had previously been using it just for students who, data suggested that they needed it as an intervention, but we realized, we've started doing it with whole classes. Our social worker is working right now with the entire first grade to teach them that curriculum. So we're starting to use it as a tier-one support, because it's really helpful for kids to learn that language, to learn how to identify their emotions and figure out how to regulate them. And then we're also providing training for our support staff as well. So a lot of times training kids, classroom teachers, but it's all the adults in a building who need to have these strategies for interacting with kids. So we've also developed some professional development and plan on working with our tutors and our assistants and everyone else in our building to make sure that they're on the same page. Another thing that is new for this coming year is that we're piloting an SEL screener. So, you know, we have reading screeners and math screeners across grade levels, but we haven't really used a social-emotional screener. So we're piloting, and I'm working with our social worker to figure out exactly what grade level we're doing it in. But it's the Social Skills Improvement System, SIS. And it's a screener that helps us sort of flag students early on who might be in need of additional supports, rather than waiting for something big to pop up to say like, you definitely need to address this now. It's hopefully gonna give us a little advance notice with some really targeted interventions that we can use with those students. And then, I'll tell you what our next item is once I get the page moved. And then we're hoping that the SIS screener, because it's tied to a curriculum, will actually help us to provide some more tier-two and tier-three supports for students. So I talked a little bit about the things that we're putting in the baseline for everyone. The other thing that we want to work on is figuring out, short of individual counseling sessions with our social worker and our school psychologist, where we want to, the mental health team wants to work together to create some more options of supports for students who might need a higher level of support. But before, they would need the support of this specially-designed special education program, because that's a really significant level of support. And then strategic objective three around inclusive culture. So prior to this year, the staff had participated in several professional developments around creating an inclusive culture with respect to language, race, and culture. And so we want to continue that work, but we also want to expand it to creating an inclusive culture with respect to ability and disability. And so some of the things that we're working on this year, which was, you know, kicked off really nicely by our keynote address at the beginning of the year, is the pre-K to twelve PD path. Many of those pathways talk are specifically about being able to better support students with disabilities in an inclusive environment. So staff at Alcott are really being encouraged to select, select an option that aligns with this. And also staff have been encouraged to write the goals for their professional practice goals for their supervision evaluation system aligned with this area. And several are taking that up. And then also just thinking really deliberately about how to ensure that our newly-developed, it's a substantially separate program with a lot of inclusive opportunities. So making sure that at each grade level, that it's really well-aligned with another classroom, so that those, we don't have to sort of, as an afterthought, figure out how to develop those inclusive opportunities, that they were built into the schedule. And so that's something that's already been, that was done this September, but then we want to keep looking at to make sure that those opportunities are there for the program to sort of work seamlessly with the classrooms that they're paired with.
Wow, awesome.
Amazing. Way to jump right into it.
Yeah, I think it's a deep one.
Yeah, I love it. I have, I had a couple of quick questions, am I answering now?
Yeah.
Is this a good talk? Okay, good. I had two questions. So first, on the social-emotional program that you're creating, I know at Thoreau, we created one a couple of years ago. Is this along the similar lines? And is it kind of cohort-based, or is it based more on kids who are already in the school that you're gathering into this?
So it's, I think it's very similar to the program that was at Thoreau, so much so that some staff that were there sort of migrated over to Alcott in April, April, when the need arose.
Wow.
I, I mean, I think you could talk to it a little bit more, but I think the goal is to have some programs in district that can help us keep our students here and meet the needs here. So right now, they happen to be four students that were already at Alcott, but as we grow and we become more of a program, I think the idea is that it could meet, it would meet the needs of the whole district and not just.
Correct, so what we've learned is things change. So Angel had needs at Thoreau that different pieces played out in ways we might not have anticipated. And simultaneously, Alcott was experiencing some new needs that escalated as the year went on. So we took a step back and looked at where the needs were and regrouped that. And yes, literally moved staff in April, sending them over to Alcott. In a little bit of a different approach, a lot more focused on one-to-one support, just to stabilize those kids the rest of the year. This fall is when they've really opened it up as a program per se. A lot more structured, a separate setting for whatever amount the kids needed. And trying to really build that long-term plan that will be housed at Alcott, depending on the needs that they come up with. We'll look at whether that's an option for kids that will learn at Thoreau.
Terrific, that's great. Thank you for supporting it and growing it out there. And then my other question was, on the screener, I know, you know, we're looking at a screener at the high school and middle school levels who do it kind of survey-based screener. How do you do a social-emotional screener in elementary school?
So this particular screener is a checklist, so it's teacher input. So there'll be questions about a variety of social skills and sort of things that you would expect to see students doing. And so it's, it's classroom teacher report.
Teacher observation report.
So it's not another assessment that students need to take. I know a lot of people asked about that. And it's not, it's based on, it's based on teacher input.
The observations.
Yeah.
And at what point in the year does that usually happen?
So, so as a pilot, I think we're just, we're, it hasn't happened yet. It has, but it has to happen late enough into the year that teachers have observed the kids and know them a little bit, but soon enough that the.
They go and take action.
I think this is the first year since we identified January to come up and get all our people going in the right direction.
That's great. Terrific, thank you. Other questions?
A little bit more about the screener. It's pilot, so it's gonna need some serious evaluation. Because there's a few of them out there. Is there an intent to see that we have a K-five or a pre-K-five screener across the buildings?
So the one, yeah. Well, you're just saying, if you remember this time last year, there were two buildings that had chosen and one had gone another way. Since then, we've developed a clear passage, just let's go with one. And the adjustment counselors are leading the charge. And then we're getting together and effectively seeing how it's being employed.
So then, would it be more accurate to say we're introducing it as opposed to piling it at your building? Is that?
Um, wow. Sure.
We're gonna see, we're gonna see if it's if it's if it's effective. So it is, I would still say it's a pilot.
Because I think, right, I think the social workers are all trying it and and sort of seeing how, whether they feel like it's effective or not. Um, I don't think that it's been a long-term commitment. I think it's probably still.
Yeah, I mean, from my seat, we started with a couple of tools last year. We kind of added those in really small scales and then decided what we wanted to put to a bigger scale. But we're still in the first round of implementation. So now we'll implement it across all three schools and really look to be sure this is the tool we felt comfortable about, wasn't broad exposure. Um, I think the work we did last year helped to inform the, what we would push out to this level of scale in a pretty thorough thorough way. But now we have to really live it in terms of its full-scale implementation.
And the expectation wouldn't be a full rollout this year to all grade levels. This is just, we're gonna identify the grade level and the target and go from there.
And if there's one thing we've learned with the pilot of these types of tools at the upper grades, piloting the tool itself is very different than actually knowing and having a plan on intervention apps. You have the data.
Right.
So they're they're very broad steps that have to get developed here and it'll be a twofold process.
Good. Thank you. Sorry, Naomi, you're getting all the questions. Someone addressed everybody.
Good practice, Deanna.
Okay, good. All right, let's move right on then.
Oh, okay, great. So you're gonna hear commonalities between the three strategic initiatives. We did work very closely.
Which is wonderful.
See it.
Just great. Uh, so I'm gonna try not to be repetitive. Um, so I'm not gonna tell you how we're piloting this this new, this screener to identify social emotional learning. I'm gonna talk about specific things that might be unique to Thoreau and give you an update on progress that we started talking about towards the end of last year so we can sort of pick up where we left off if that makes sense. Terrific. Um, what I love about all three of these strategic initiatives that we're focusing on this year is they're all so closely related. So as I was listening to you talk, I was thinking, yes, like this. So if we are creating an inclusive culture and offering students multiple paths to find success and we are supporting them on an individual basis, we know they're gonna be wonderful. So I just love how connected they are. Um, so I'm gonna start off with our, um, first strategic initiatives, which are identical to those that Naomi mentioned at Alcott. Um, some of the approaches that we're taking, um, to make sure that that, um, that we are improving our teaching and learning practices is that we are continuing the pretty significant commitment that we made to the literacy collaborative program. And that was probably sort of two years ago where we had sent one of our reading, our reading specialists to be a highly specialized training at Leslie. And she was able to come back and engage our teachers in grades K to two in over forty hours of professional development over the course of a year. She was able to work with her first cohort for two years and now she's starting her second cohort. So she is by the end going to be able to provide professional development for teachers K two over a multi-year period. So at the same time that she has been working with her cohorts last year, uh, one of our third grade teachers was interested in expanding it from grades three to five. So she is in the middle of year one of her coaching year this year. And she's already started to engage her first cohort of eight teachers, grades three to five, in this this large commitment to professional learning. And so they had their second meeting today, so they are off and running. So we're super proud of that, um, of the work because it's being led in-house. So we developed the capacity and now we're bringing it to the masses, which is, it's been wonderful. So we're very excited about that. We're also excited about the opportunity that it provides us because it dovetails so nicely with the Lucy Cockens units of study and that they fit perfectly in. So the teachers who are trained in the new units can now slide them neatly into their writer's workshop. But we're really gonna be emphasizing using the rubrics that accompany, um, the Lucy Cockens units of studies consistently so that we can have a tighter sense of how students are doing statistically with improving their writing scores. So really excited about that. Um, let's see. Okay, um, we're continuing to strengthen our progress monitoring of students who are receiving tier two and three supports. Uh, we found anecdotally that we were hanging on to some students who are in the tier two a little bit longer than is best practice. So what's normally supposed to be a six to eight week period and then you pull off to see if the students have mastered the skill or made progress. We were sort of hanging on and letting go very slowly. So we're trying to be really tight to actually progress monitoring and not ever, we're trying to actually start to pull back and see if the students are able to apply the skills instead of hanging on to them too long. So that's a little nerve-wracking, but we're excited to do it. And our interventionists are providing us with, uh, they're attending our progress monitoring meetings and providing us with, um, with written summaries of how students are doing after receiving the six to eight weeks so that everyone feels a little bit more confident, hopefully, as we start to let go a little bit. So as you know, last year, we started the intensive learning program for students in K and one, where we were servicing eight students, uh, in district-wide program, uh, many of whom came from the integrated preschool. And this year, we were able to sort of backfill students who were going from grade one to two with students who are coming in from the preschool. So we have, um, another group of seven students who continue in that program. And we've been able to open an additional bridge program, uh, for students in grades one to three, another district-wide program where we are servicing eight students, uh, in a highly inclusive, um, setting where they are ranging in their ability to access the general education curriculum. But we are super proud of it because the question was what's gonna happen after last year? What's gonna happen after they get finished with first grade? So, um, really excited to work with, uh, Ruthie Ruby around working out a five-year plan. So for, so for our students who are currently in kindergarten, what's it gonna look like for those students when they're ten years old? You know, so we're trying to work as a team to figure out how, but it's been wonderful. It's been exciting. It's been great to meet new students. Some students coming in at grade three, other students coming in kindergarten. So it's been fantastic. Really excited about that. Um, we are also, I'm not gonna tell you things we're also doing, uh, working with Rivers and Revolutions. Um, Michael Boo and his team are gonna be starting in with our first two classes of fifth graders. Uh, they're running two in the fall, two in the spring, and so we're excited for that to kick off starting October seventh. Um, let's see. Okay, so I feel like this, these are so related, the last two. So this is around well-being. Um, so in addition to doing everything that we've already talked about doing district-wide, um, we had written a grant that we received through the Concord Ed Fund to bring in Sarah Ward, who's a local expert on executive functioning, to offer, uh, training that's starting from now all the way to the spring, on Tuesday afternoons for teachers K to five because the need is just so great. Um, last year, my school group plan reflected, um, some small group work that was happening between one of our fifth grade special education teachers and our school psychologists who are doing, you know, four to six week rounds with anywhere from five to ten students in fifth grade, trying to shore up their executive functioning skills before they went to the middle school. But we really found that wasn't enough and we really need to start a lot younger. So, um, our turnout for the first training was fantastic. Everyone's excited about it. Everyone's talking about it. So we're really looking at how we can use that because a lot of times, one of the issues that we hear about is, okay, so they're, you're helping them manage this during the day, but when we go home, they forget the homework, or they're stressing out about the homework. So we're really trying to tie in this idea of of wellness and homework with executive functioning so that we can help support kids before they go home and have that that meltdown regarding homework. So we're hoping that we can have, give students, uh, some tools and parents some tools for how they can help support them so there's not such a huge home and school disconnect when it comes to homework. Uh, inclusive culture. Um, so you can't have some of the programs that we have in our school without putting in a lot of work and thought and time into making the school environment that is inclusive for all students. Um, we were, um, we were thrilled to add our additional classroom and our, my general education teachers have been wonderful, wonderfully welcoming, flexible, um, allowing students to sort of come and go at different times and working to accommodate their varying schedules. We have some students who have upwards of five hundred hours of service delivery that we're trying to fit in through the course of a week. So that takes a lot of flexibility on everyone's part to make that happen. So really proud of that work that we've done around scheduling so that we can maximize the inclusion time for our students who are in these programs and our students who are NIPs in general. So our hope is that all students feel a really authentic connection to not just our special education homework, but also a general education homework as well. And the professional development, we're gonna be doing the K twelve. It's been wonderful. So those are our, our initiatives. Any questions?
Oh my gosh.
It's impressive.
It is.
And you're excited about it and so are we. Thank you.
It's really exciting. It's a lot, but it's really exciting. I think I said that last year too. Really exciting.
And year four, and year four.
Yes, but you know, it's, the the team has come together so wonderfully and now I have an assistant principal, so that helps even more.
Oh, Angel, if you'd tell me a little bit more about this Sarah Ward work. I, I'm so excited about that. I've seen her as well. She's fabulous.
I heard about her, but I hadn't seen her. She comes in, she knows schools, she knows homes, she knows kids. And she is helping us distinguish between what we may have perceived as one thing. So a lot of times, students who have executive functioning deficits can present as unintentional or as behavioral or something else, so just not focused. But she's really helping us identify some really specific characteristics and things that we can do to minimize and change our practice that are are things that you could do tomorrow. So we're sitting there in her training and it's not like, oh, yeah, that's great or okay, it's all about the research. It's like, no, when you have a student who's doing this, here's how you do this that you take into your classroom tomorrow and see what happens. So it's so useful and practical in that way. And she's just a wonderful presenter down to earth, um, and everyone's getting a ton out of it, so.
And how, can you tell me more about how you bridge that to home? You're saying things to send home. So how does that then get translated?
Part of the grant was she would do work with parents.
Work with parents.
So, yeah, so we have a certain number of sessions. I'm not sure how we parceled it out where she's going to offer, uh, parents.
Basically, public session for the parents.
For, yes. I don't know if that's for everyone.
Right.
But, yes, uh, but we had a full house, so we're really excited.
That's awesome.
And and again, that's the Concord Education Fund.
Concord Ed Fund, yeah.
Wow.
Yes. And a really dynamic group of, uh, teachers put the grant together, coming from all different disciplines and backgrounds. So it's, it was great.
That is great. Other questions?
Yeah, can can you speak a little to what the Rivers and Revolution class is gonna look like?
Yes, um, so I think it's gonna look different than it, what I've heard it was in the past. We've had, at my first year here, we had a couple of, there's stewardship groups come through. But this is an opportunity for all of the students in fifth grade across all three elementary schools to get a taste of what Matt's fifth graders have.
I was gonna say Matt, sorry, yeah. What's happened to him?
So Michael and his team and his students are going to come in and they are going to come in, um, I believe it's four, two, between two and four hour sessions on a series of six Wednesdays where they're going to teach a full interdisciplinary unit of study that is aligned to the standards, highly engaging. So it's content that our teachers would otherwise be teaching anyway. But they are going, the students are going to come in and engage our our students in in the lesson. They're gonna be the teachers and they're going to do some place-based learning, some projects, and there's going to be a service component.
Nice.
So I'm excited. We're meeting with him to discuss it on Friday.
Good.
Very excited and curious, very curious about it.
Yeah.
Uh, but the idea that it's something that all of our students can access, um, regardless of, so that was how it was sort of, I was sold on it was that every student can access this. No matter what, who they are, every student can can access.
There's no question. I mean, man, I had the gift of being in classrooms last year as they were at Willard and, um, it's pretty magical to watch them. That Michael's team spends so much time preparing their high school kids to teach that they come in enormously well-prepared and the young kids are just completely feeding into. And it's, it's hard to describe. It's so great. So we'll have to figure out how to capture it, but, um.
It's also remarkably motivating as as adults, um, to tap into their energy and their authenticity and their earnestness, right? Uh, but all aligned with Michael and the fifth grade staff and that you can't help but feel motivated to do even more. Uh, that that they're modeling for us what it feels like to to take the lead. Uh, so it's a remarkable experience, yeah.
I think the interdisciplinary activities you're doing are critical. The earlier we do them, the better.
Yeah.
Because as lifelong learners, that's the world they're going into.
Yeah.
So it's, um, that, you know, having an understanding of how all of this works together rather than, you know, the segmented way we've been doing it for eons.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to see we're doing it here.
Great.
Thanks.
That was me telling Mr. Lucy he could enjoy all the fruits of that. All by himself.
Thank you.
Be back. Um, so again, the alignment between three buildings is a piece that I've really enjoyed over the last three years to understand more and more about, uh, Thoreau and Alcott. Um, having our district-wide meetings where we sit in, this past week, we sat in, each of us in the three assistant principals sat in on each grade level to hear what others are doing in other buildings. And it was really inspiring, um, and also, um, a challenge to to understand best practice but to share, to be humble enough to see what's happening in one building and to bring it back to your own. So what you'll see, I think you've already seen, within our individual, uh, improvement plans, there are some real standard alignment, but there's also some deep digs of areas that we wanna grow. So in mine, for example, Aaron, on on the first objective, you'll see that we're really concentrating on phonics-based instruction. Um, that, uh, Willard, um, uh, is the school that has a language-based, uh, classroom. And I should say, my friend Terry Fono here, who's on our, uh, our school advisory council, I meant to introduce you right off the bat. So you jump in, Terry, whenever, if there's anything that I miss. Um, but what we're so proud of is our work towards, uh, providing our students with deep instructional ability. So when, uh, two years ago, we had two members of staff who were Wilson certified. Today, we have seven. We have seven because of training, of hiring, right? That meets the needs of our kids. Um, Foundations, which is the grassroots introduction to phonics, uh, we introduced in K and one. This year, we're doing two and three. Why is that important? It's the shared language, the shared expectations, it's the opportunity to provide some R T I for those students who might be identified with some of these, uh, challenges in language. Um, and how do we address that within the classroom in the least restricted manner with the highest degree of expertise? So those are a couple of ways in which we're doing our work. We're also, um, navigating the course of using Empower. And my good friend, Kate K. Wire, who's here tonight, uh, is one of the leaders, uh, uh, using Empower in our school. Um, but what we have now is during M-CAS season, when they say you can use a graphic organizer, well, our kids have a blank sheet of paper because they create their own graphic organizer using the brain frames from Empower. And what we're doing is thinking of how we marry that with our Lucy Cockens and then sharing our work across buildings. So it's the collaboration and also the excitement to do these different things. Um, we're working closely on our, uh, teacher assistance team, our R T I model. Um, and one thing that has come about from the negotiated contract is seeing our staff more frequently doing our two fifty-minute blocks. And this is what, um, Thoreau's been doing for a number of years. But this enables to get back and having those continued conversations. We can begin, um, a six-week, um, intervention with a child. But rather than wait all the way for that six weeks to be done, we can see that, how are we doing three weeks later? Touch base with that teacher three weeks into it and fine-tune things as we go. Um, we're expanding special education program, uh, to include the intensive learning needs of this language-based environment. And what, um, I'm very proud to report is that the staff does such a beautiful job of creating community within that classroom, but also with the classroom, uh, that it's married to and which is quite an endeavor as a child to feel community within a small space, but also community within the greater school. Um, and our staff see that as you're a member of Ms. Hunter's class, but you just happened to go and be borrowed for a period of time to go somewhere else, right? And, um, when we have visits regularly from parents who, uh, when we're talking about where a child might, um, receive services, the statement is regularly said that it feels really good in here, right? It's a classroom like all other classrooms with a teacher who knows the students, with the classroom that's full of of warmth and excitement and learning. Um, so that's one that we've talked about regularly about. That is so important to us as we're building these programs. Another piece that, um, I need to thank Dr. Another piece that I need to thank Dr. Hunter for is a few weeks ago when we got together with the Special Education PAC, and we heard from them, and that was really important feedback for us. We've used it already in IEP meetings, saying, so let's talk about least restrictive, let's talk about most involved, right? And how do we have really good conversations? So one parent said, Matt, it was, sometimes it's, it's really good that a child, you know, we find out doesn't, isn't, Spanish isn't a good fit for whatever reason, so so let's use that to do something else, and everyone feels pretty good about it, but why don't we work a little bit harder to have the child fully engage in Spanish, or fully engage in PE, or, right, that, let's really make it difficult on ourselves to be as inclusive as possible, right? Our other inclusive work, which we're very proud of, is our work around, in the other buildings, are embracing of our diverse community, and last year, we had our first international gathering, which was a celebration not of what makes us similar, but what makes us different, and we're going to have our second. And that was the number one, right, that was the number one, we got to do this again of the PTG, because it was one of those nights of celebration for a community, so we'll be back to do that. Another piece that we're working on, along with Kristen, Herbert, and Ruth Grooby, is the universal screener for dyslexia that will be implemented in kindergarten, and we're learning from some of our colleagues in other districts what they're using, and how effective it is, so we're going to be implementing that. And again, it's one that we're committed to in doing good work, and identifying early is best. The, we'll also be joining the Innovative Learning Practices Committee, and I have to say that another outcome from your support of us by having assistant principals is how we get to do better work, right? So when Chris Price and I are working with half the number of, of members of staff that we had last year, I can say, Wiley, what do you want to do? Why do you want to do it? What's exciting about you? Let's take some risks, right? And as a result, again, my friend Kate Swire just had his beer tonight, Kate and a colleague said, we really want to team teach next year, right? And I'm like, let's go, what are you, what are you thinking? And we could sort it out, right? So now Kate has this experience with Amy Wiley, where they're feeling that they're doing, if I might speak for you, I don't mean to speak for you, Kate, right, they're feeling really successful, they're getting deeper into the content, the kids are, are saying, we love this, it's a little bit of taste before they go off to the middle school, changing classrooms, and that's the kind of stuff that honestly, I don't know if I would have been ready to bite off, right, it's a cake, you know what, good idea, but I don't have time for that, right? Now we do, now we do. So it's those innovative practices, and I can, you know, our first grade teacher who's doing STEM in a classroom, you know, I could go on and on and on, our last year with our, when they did the podcast, you know, as a book group, right, those are the things we get to do, and now we get to support better our teachers to take those risks. And when Dr. Hunter says, take those risks, challenge yourself, it's okay, you model it, we model it, our staff see it, we support them. So thank you, your work is valuable to us. Again, we won't go on much further, just on the ISSP for identifying as a screener for social-emotional learning, and then the tools that we'll use, I'm very excited about that. Our work about community and community building, and collaboration and opportunities, just one example is working with our PTG, we are working on the Quiet Spot, which we began last year, which is an opportunity at all school events for students who are overwhelmed by sensory, that we have an area within every single large group, all building event, where those students can have a place that's quiet, and not one that is isolating, and one that is shaming, but rather a spot that is welcoming, and reaffirming, and so we feel very good about that. And then lastly, Sarah Ward, which my good friend, Ms. Charles, is bringing to her school, I've been hearing about Sarah Ward for years from our, from our work at Willard, and we're very fortunate that the all, all district professional development has some work with Sarah Ward as well, so we're going to tap into that, and then hopefully bring Sarah Ward back in for our own work. And again, we're thrilled what we're doing, we're excited to be working together, and we appreciate all your support.
You make support easy, and we deserve little, because I think we're simply trying to represent the community and their interests. Dr. Hunter, if you tried to lighten their load with assistant principals, you clearly failed, because they're simply saddled with many more objectives and many more ambitions that have them excited.
That's what we love about them.
That's true.
So thank you. Thank you. Questions? Well, and then more comment, the enthusiasm with which you've tackled us this year, and what you just mentioned about risk-taking, that is pervasive now through the district, is so exciting, because it's not where we were five years ago. And, you know, to have central administrators, building administrators, and faculty in the room, listening and talking about this is, is extraordinary, and because it, it required, there's support required up and down the line, and, and there's a level of interaction and trust that's developed that allows that to happen, and that doesn't happen without those things. So I'm, I mean, there's so many things that are, you could just point to thing after, you know, instance after instance after instance, from, you know, what we're talking about here, and interest-based bargaining, to all of the things that we've been able to accomplish, and, you know, you require a lot of the backlight for that, but, you know, all of, because you're willing to do this. You know, to listen, it was last year or two years ago, you know, when Angel started this process of, you know, working on, you know, being more attentive to special needs activity in school, and look where we are now, I mean, it's extraordinary, so, thank you.
It really is, it's rewarding for all of us to see.
Oh, yes.
To, to see this, to see it from the strategic plan that we worked on a couple of years ago, to be flowing into this, you know, it was two years ago, so many of us sat in this room and talked about where we want the district to be five years from now, and, boy, we're, we're there and getting there in so many ways, and to see the three of you so well-coordinated is really, really exciting.
But not lockstep, that's what.
But not lockstep, exactly, no, it's, it's coordinated, but focusing on the things that each school needs and wants to focus on more, which is really, truly the best type of teamwork that you could imagine.
Yeah.
And thank you also, all of you, and Dr. Hunter, for the, and the three assistant principals, for the creativity and flexibility that went into creating this leadership team structure that's now at all three schools, because it, it does take flexibility, each of you assistant principals are doing two jobs now, and that speaks volumes to your dedication to what needs to happen here, so I just, I want to recognize that that is a really big step and very impressive on all of your parts, and it clearly is bringing amazing value to the students, so, thank you all for all that you put into this.
And pass on thanks.
They've only had them for a month.
I know.
Everybody's not here, and I know, everybody on your staff contributes to this work that you presented today.
I think that's the underlying that we really need to celebrate, it's about the teachers, right, the teachers who are doing, like, we, we, our job is to support the staff, and to enable the staff to do their best work, right, and sometimes to, to push, just to, to allow yourself to, to, to be creative, but it's, they're doing beautiful work, they're the ones who take the risks, they're the ones who are the most important success variable in a child's career, it's the teachers, it's our job just to support them, they're doing all the work.
Well, many thanks.
Thank you.
There we go, and thank you for coming and spending the evening with us, I know it's a great night. Okay, now we get to hear about middle school.
Continuum.
Continuum, I know, exactly, Justin and team, please join us.
I'm chuckling, Angel and I have a unwritten rule to never follow Matt.
That sounds hard.
Matthew David Thoreau.
Next time we go, the opposite direction, man, mix it up.
Well, at least you don't have to follow your own students like I have to.
That's a good point, that was hard to follow.
Yeah, it was.
So it's my great pleasure to introduce Mr. Tyler Steffey, who is an assistant principal at Concord Middle School, based mostly in the Sanborn Building, and Ms. Laura Brand, who is our special education team chair at Concord Middle School, Olive Bradford, who is our assistant principal, based out of the puberty building, had to step out to be with family. Warm welcome to both of them. Anything you guys want to share?
Just thanks for having us, for the nice to be here.
Great to have you here.
Glad to have you.
Okay, so we're here to talk about the middle school school improvement plan. I think what's interesting and fascinating at the same time about a school improvement plan is what role the school council, the school advisory council takes in the implementation of such a plan. And Tyler saw, and was witness to this last year, about a community of adult students, so the school advisory council at the middle school is comprised of middle school students, parents, community members, and faculty and staff as well, and we have a nice spectrum of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, parents in both buildings, and the community member is always the toughest one to get involved, but the implementation and their role and the action plan of this plan, I think is really where the impact is built in a community. So if we scroll down just to the actual goals, thank you, Erin. So the school improvement goals are aligned with the strategic plan of multiple paths to success, well-being, inclusive culture, and, and innovative environment, you know, you all were witness to the fact that, you know, we had just gone through some amazing change, a renaissance of sorts at the middle school. So what you'll find is a common theme throughout this plan is we're in year two of supporting a lot of that change. So, you know, I would like to volley back what Mr. Lucy was saying to the teachers at Concord Middle School, you know, and their support in the implementation of the big change that we just went through, which is the reconfiguration of course. It was really only with cooperation of the teachers, and if you do go back, and if part of the due diligence of when this community looked to make such a move, I believe it was five years ago, and then before that, it was five years ago before then, it was, you know, many different times the community looked at reconfiguring Concord Middle School, and I think the only common thread was the faculty and staff didn't seem to be ready at that time. So, you know, I just want to honor, you know, not just the teachers, but, you know, everyone from the kitchen staff, and the custodians, and the building service workers, who all looked at Lori and I in honestly, month three, and said, you know, we're ready to do this, you know, we understand the value and the impact that this can have on Concord Middle School. So, a lot of what you see here in this presentation is in support of where we are in year two of that big change, multiple paths to success, we are like the elementary school, we are aligned with some of the support by Kristen and Ruthie and Dr. Hunter, in what RTI looks like, there's been a lot of work done with CC as well, as far as what RTI looks like at a secondary level, and like the elementary schools, we have screeners, we have both a math screener and ELA screener, and we have what CC is using for a social-emotional screener, which is the PARE, it's out of the PARE Institute, it's the HSA, we actually have a rep coming from the PARE Institute tomorrow, to meet with Olive Bradford and I to talk about the implementation of the screener. The screener, very different from the data that we see from the Youth Behavioral Risk Survey, which is just trends, and holistic about, you know, how our community compares with the surrounding communities, this screener allows us to target students at risk, and to deliver intervention through both master schedules, and the puberty master schedule, which is brand new this year, has an intervention block built right in, something that we're piloting in this puberty building, and looking to potentially bring over to the Sanborn Building the following school year as well. We have a couple special education programs, we have a social-emotional program called Access, that is, and it's year two in the Sanborn Building, and, and it's year one in the puberty building, and we have a language-based program as well. And then as you saw, in the beginning of your evening, we have a student council that, you know, just bringing them here, I felt like was, you know, action of 1.3, you know, giving them a voice, and making sure that they feel heard, and that they're a big part of the community and what's going on at the middle school. I felt most proud when you heard, I believe it was Alex Nugent, who said, you know, I really wasn't a fan of the change, very early in the discussion, and we involved them in the discussion, which quite honestly was around this time last year, which, you know, that was even before student council was a thing, you know, so it was multiple just invites, you know, them meeting with teachers at lunches, them coming down to my office at lunches, and having these informal discussions, you know, there's an idea that I sat with CT, Concord Ed Fund, excuse me, on just a couple days ago, about a real innovative kind of Saturday where we're going to be celebrating innovation in an entrepreneur's spirit, and we look forward to sharing that idea with all of you as well. Well-being, we are in year three of Challenge Success, excuse me, year two formally with the team that we have comprised, we actually have a parent, part of the audience, who is part of our Challenge Success team, that is another team that's made up of students, faculty members, and parents, and we're also in year two, the mindfulness steering committee actually met today, and has a focus on teachers' own well-being, and that's a motif that we have throughout each faculty meeting, is focusing on self-care, and making sure that, you know, we're taking care of ourselves, and reflecting that back to our community, and that's a big theme that we have throughout this school year. We're in year two of Rethinking, our one-to-one initiative, we had a very deliberate and slow, slow rollout to the laptops, I joked, but I did have the students who came this morning in my office this morning as well, who were just talking about different things they want to talk about, and I forget who mentioned it, but, you know, without prompting, well, it was one of the sixth graders without prompting, and quite frankly, without comparing it to anything, she was comparing, or she was just sharing how the teachers, through a new course we have in the sixth grade called Fundamentals, which is a trimester-long course in really, how do you do this middle school, you know, how to be a successful middle school student, she really talked a lot about, you know, how the laptop rollout looked differently this year, which I thought was, you know, pretty powerful for a student who, you know, I had to ask, you have brothers or sisters who've been through here, and, you know, you're not really comparing it to anything, but she really remarked, she felt that the teachers were really just slowing down, you know, just how important was the rollout of these devices, and what the purpose, what purpose do they play in supporting and enhancing the higher-level learning, and really trying to strike a balance, you know, we shared with them student agendas and homework agendas, you know, a month before these got into their hands, and that was, again, a product of our Rethinking the One-to-One Committee and their work last year. The transition from fifth to sixth, we felt like, as a community, we had a deep dive into supporting, you know, the elementary school principals, allowing us to come to the elementary schools, you know, I felt like at some point last year, and we're going to reflect this forward to this year, also outreach to even the fourth grade, you know, who I really believe a lot of families start thinking about middle school, and what does that look like, and, you know, what choices families might have, and we were very deliberate, and, you know, since we're going to the elementary schools anyways, you know, why not target more than just the fifth grade, and have an open evening, which we did in February of last year, and that's something that in this school improvement plan, we're looking to continue forward as well. Moving forward to inclusive culture, we're very proud, I sat with a parent yesterday, who... who, you know, came in and talked a little bit about special education, but then wanted to talk about the work that was accomplished last year through the cultural competency lens. And, you know, he actually asked what was, you know, the intent or the next steps. I said, "Well, so happens, I'm, you know, going to be presenting the school improvement plan." With those questions being answered, just today in our Tuesday work, we had teacher leaders stand in front of the faculty and share how the House Tuesday meetings or the House Teen Tuesday meetings look differently for this calendar year and how each one is going to take on a cultural competency theme to it. And really take the work that we've been doing as a district to the next step. I think I've shared it in this space before and I'm very proud, so I'll say it again. I do think this is an area where the middle school, you know, thank you, thanks for the good work done by Seda and Sarah and others, you know, are really leading the district. And we're very proud of that. If you recall, we did a visit to the school committee sometime last March. It was myself, it was Andrew, and it was Gretchen Carr, who is now a senior at CC. We, with the work with the Boston Celtics and really the leverage in looking to bring what the Boston Celtics were giving an opportunity for public schools to engage in. And we had one day where we celebrated and really had opportunities for middle school students, sixth, seventh, and eighth, to go through some real-life scenarios on what they would do if faced in, you know, some real-life schemas of discrimination happening. And we're looking to bring that work to the second year and actually open up, we did it once last year and we reached out to 30 students. We're inviting eight of those students back to be with the adults who are planning what year two looks like. And we're gonna be doing this about four or five times this year. Reaching out to about 40 students at a time. So we're looking and have a goal to actually get the students in front of the Celtics playbook initiative and have a good third of the students a part of that. Wow, this is a lights-out presentation.
They should come back in.
All right. You know, 3.3, continue to partner with our Boston families. You know, getting out there is as important, you know, and Andrew and I have been out there a few times. But also making sure that they recognize that they're, you know, as part of the community as our Concord families. Moving on to innovative environment in year two. You know, obviously, we're very excited about all the work that the middle school building committee is doing. And we're also re-establishing the middle school reconfiguration steering committee as well. And the work that we've done in the communities that have two different buildings, the sixth grade and the seventh and eighth grade building, they were able to really advance forward, you know, what it looks like in year two of such a move. And they really had us, you know, or they shared with us that we had to have a focus on that transition from sixth grade to seventh grade and how that transition looks so differently. You know, I remember as a seventh grade teacher for close to 10 years, just always so amazed in the fall of just, wow, I forgot how young they are in the seventh grade. And when I reflect that with the group from Needham, who did this work about 10 years ago, they effectively said, "You haven't seen anything yet." You know, when they come from a building that they own to a building that they finally have older students in. Because think about it, for two straight years, you know, they're the king of the, king and queens of the land. You know, so to have them come over, you know, that eighth-grade look, you know, I remember the principal saying, "The eighth-grade look just doesn't hold the power that it's supposed to have." You know, the eighth-grade look to the seventh-grade boy, you know, and, you know, to really focus the work on that transition and that support. And that was important for us to hear. Last thing I just want to share is just shout out to our parent-teacher group and the Concord Ed Fund. We have an outdoor classroom that is about to open up in the Sanborn Building. Again, something that was always an initiative and an idea, but we could only really look to bring together the work in one building. And in the old configuration, that's where ideas would go to die. Because how could you only have half of a grade or grades have access to that? So knowing that the way in which we're doing Concord Middle School now, all the students at some point in seventh and eighth grade will have access to that outdoor classroom. And we're very deliberate in bringing together the materials and the furniture, everything that's part of it is just picked up and brought when we do have that new building. That's where we are.
Great.
Thank you.
Wow. Exciting stuff. Questions from you guys?
No, no question comment again. The, and I meant to mention this to the elementary principals too. The amount of interaction with parents is valuable. And, and it's critical because, you know, the faculty and the parents, not the kids. And to be able to effectively engage, and it's been mentioned a dozen times tonight, is exciting. Been a big proponent of this change we've made and I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into it. A lot of hard work's gone into it over four years because we tried to do this and just decided that we couldn't at one point. And I was in Needham when that all took place. And my son was in the second class that went through the sixth grade there. And I watched what I think was a transformation in the way kids cared for each other through the rest of their school years in Needham, which was very different than anything I'd experienced or expected. So I think we are in for a ride and it'll be fun to watch, so good luck with it.
Fabulous. I have a quick question too. You were mentioning earlier the team meetings that happened. And I'm curious to hear a little bit more about those and how it works. I know that even with a full grade in each school, each grade is split into two teams. And can you tell us a little bit more about how those teams support the students, the teachers support the students, and what happens in those team planning meetings?
Of course, yeah. And thank you for calling. Teams, we're trying to actually transition from the word house to teams. It's just a, it's a vernacular that I think other middle schools, when we connect and we come together, you know, have a shared language, you know, middle school, you know, philosophy of a middle school, I really believe it has to be a team, you know. And it's that team where the adults come together, on average, about two times a week. And they sit down, there are two seventh-grade teams, two eighth-grade teams, there are actually three sixth-grade teams. And what all the adults have in common is they share the same group of students. And even this morning, I was with a parent and we were talking about, you know, what's going well in, I believe it was social studies and science. And the parent was asking me like, "So what does this look like in terms of, you know, is there opportunity for the social studies and the science teacher to share out, you know, why did they think it's going well?" Well, there you go. That's what the team in middle school is all about. Because, you know, Laura and Tyler sit on the meetings, I'm a part of the meetings. And, you know, when we're talking about students, we always want to frame it in, you know, this is how they can be successful. And it's happening in science, it's happening in math. And share a little bit, you know, this is the prompting of the team members, share a little bit about what practices are in place that is bringing out the very best in the student. Because we want to just take that and bring it, you know, in whatever class of a student, you know, at this very day might not be at her best or his best. And then again, you know, keep coming back to it, but, you know, the fact that even when you have two teams, which we've always had at Concord Middle School, but, you know, them being in the both building, the common planning time that is available to both science teachers in the same grade, both social studies, you know, that is, that's a game changer, quite frankly. So that's happening as much as the team time as well.
Terrific. Oh my gosh, all the incredible work that's gone into making this year a success. And I just have to say, I think I've said it before, but the amount of change that's happened in this middle school and when you're the reconfiguration, a new student council, all of the things that you've implemented over the past six months to a year, I mean, it's mind-boggling. And thank you so much for making it all happen. It's really incredible.
No, thank you for your support.
And I think, you know, you will, I'm sure you're telling us this is every day, week, you see the benefits of the reconfiguration. I mean, people are just beginning to, when a teacher's taught in one building for, you know, some 15, 20 years, to now be able to work with their peers every day, not have to make some special arrangement, is just, it's huge.
You know, every day we're living just how exciting this change is. Mentioned earlier was, you know, the student council. You know, as all middle school student councils will do, are just going off in nine different directions. And, you know, through the advisors and, you know, a part of the meeting as well, we're like, okay, you know, all students who want to talk about this go in that direction. And one of the directions that again, I could never have taken these last few years is, you know, all the eighth graders who are part of student council, if you want to meet about lunch, you know, and the changes we can make at lunch, how about this, let's meet at lunch. And that is just something that was just impossible and possible. You know, if I wanted to meet a principal with eighth graders at lunch, I would have to meet with the puberty eighth graders one day and the Sanborn eighth graders another day. And having lived that the last few years, the second group that you always would meet with would bring something up that'd be like, oh, you know, now I gotta get back to the first group.
Of course.
Not to mention just getting in the car and trying to get over before, you know, that other lunch ends, so. It's a game changer.
Great.
It's fabulous.
He didn't even mention the loss of Sanborn time.
I know, that's right. And they're both on real-world time. Terrific. Well, thank you so much for being here tonight. I know it's a late night for all of you. Thank you for coming and sharing. Okay, we'll give you a minute. Feel free to go home and get your rest. Have a good night.
Have a good night. Sorry, Jared, they're not staying for your program yet.
It's taped, you can watch it right now.
Jared's hurt.
We'll have to move me in front.
That's right. We'll put you, we'll put you up first. Okay, so I'll do a quick update on middle school building. Once again, I have to follow all these great people.
What is this?
So, middle school building update, you know, I can review some before the, at the high level is that I keep telling people, I can't believe how efficient and effective this building committee is. It's an incredible group that's really moving things along well. So, as we've mentioned before, we've hired Hill International as our OPM, the project manager. They have helped us to create the request for services, which is the document that we put out looking for designers who are interested in working with us. So that has been published. That is out, we have a due date of, Jared?
The 18th.
We expect there will be a significant interest as there was for the OPM position. So that's moving right along. The building committee is meeting Thursday morning and then also taking tours of more schools this coming Friday. So we're already getting out there into other middle schools to see what other schools are doing and just get all our creative juices flowing in terms of where we want to be. We're also talking about, I know that there's a desire for information. We are working very hard to start getting all of our documents and information onto the website. We do have a page on the district website and the town website links to that. So we're working very hard to get everything on there and be accessible quickly. We're gonna start talking about communications more and how to do outreach, but that's coming at coming building committee meetings. That's basic. Any other details to add? Do you think that's, any questions on? It is moving along incredibly well. That's the building committee, I think. And now, it's time for the big show from Jared.
That's for last. I have some handouts. I'll pass out to the audience. Do they have, do you have a set for the committee?
And you guys as well. So what you have in front of you is we closed out FY19.
Do we have one more at the, sorry?
So this format, you're pretty used to. Cynthia, this is, this is what I call a variance report. It's a format that I like to present monthly and quarterly to the school committee. So we officially closed FY19. So basically, the way that this report is, it's by the 1,000 DESI function, how we ended the general fund. And then I wrote, and then we have it by the DESI 100 function. So, in closing, we, so we prepaid 256,000 in collaborative tuitions, which, so we had a CPS had an FY18 revolving, circuit breaker revolving account balance of 533,000. So we brought that over to FY19. Last year, we received 872,000 in circuit breaker in FY19. So of that one point, this is kind of confusing, but of that 1.4 million available, we only spent 718,000. Therefore, we have a carryover balance for FY20 of 686,462. So we prepaid the 256 plus this 686. So basically what this, in this report is just a, how we ended the year. Which, you can see there's a lot of adjustments, not many parentheses, which is good. And, yeah.
Review again, your prepays were in June for fiscal 19.
Correct.
So the carryover after those?
The carryover after that was 686,000.
Thank you very much.
Of that 686,000, if you remember, 150 of that was reserved really to balance FY20's budget out of the, the circuit breaker revolving offset that we had. So I anticipated having at least 150,000 and we ended the year even better and had 686.
And that 686 can carry over to next year.
That can carry over, so we have to use at least the amount that we received that prior fiscal year. So we can, we can really have up to 871 in there, but we have to spend at least that, that amount.
Got it. And that can go, that can only go towards special education.
Correct, yeah. So we use it for tuitions.
Okay, good. Terrific. So that'll go into our, the workings of our next budget, which is terrific.
Yeah.
Does the fiscal 19 closeout point you in any direction in terms of managing the fiscal 20 already?
Yes.
It will over time.
So it's, so we're really in the, towards the end of building, well, really, we're in the middle of building the FY21 budget. Next Friday, the principals are gonna be getting back all, giving me all of their requests and then I put it all together. So just seeing the patterns, seeing what the real actuals were for FY19, studying those, comparing them to really the past five years, and then seeing how they're sort of holding up, especially the salaries for the FY20's budget. It's just seeing the trends and, I can say, you know, 95% if not higher of the costs that we expended in FY19 and now in the correct accounts. So that's really gonna help me So that's really gonna help me for FY twenty-one's budget. FY twenty's budget, as you know, we built it in my first three, four months here. So FY twenty-one will be cleaner and FY twenty-two will be even better if we keep going, but, so, this is the fun part.
That's why we are here, Jared.
What's your, what's your point on it?
This is the part that happens, I'm excited.
I think in fact, you were working on this a couple of months before you got here.
Oh, yeah. So can I just ask for a little, I know that in the variance, you've taken us through all of these as the year went on. So none of these are surprises to us, but especially for anybody who hasn't followed it. Can you just do a quick review of where those changes are in the adjustments? Obviously, there is a big change in district leadership and administration and then in programs with other districts.
Yep.
Can you just kind of give us the high level on that?
Sure. Really, the, the way to read this, I'm, I'm actually gonna start with the, the one hundred function. Because one of my goals this year is going to be to continue to clean up the chart of accounts. So we are still using functions that are no longer DESI functions and I put an asterisk there. That doesn't mean we're not reporting it to the state correctly. We have a crosswalk that when we do the end of year report that actually was due today and we passed that in for both budgets. We have a crosswalk, so anything with an asterisk, you know, they're very close, they're in the same one thousand function. And they're very similar to the, the one that they're closest to, if that makes sense. So the way to read this is obviously the, the adopted budget, the adjustments that I will bring to you, you know, when I bring the variance reports and then all the expenditures, obviously, and then the balance. For the CPS budget, we zero it out, other than the revolving account. The, the high school budget's a little different because that goes into E and D. But for this, we, we zero it out and we're able to put those into our revolving accounts. I mean, for the most part, there are some very large balances, well, adjustments, but I can pretty much explain them all, but it's
Right.
Kind of a grand picture here. But I can, you have any specific questions maybe on some of them or?
Well, I think it's important to, to note, correct me if I'm wrong, that these adjustments that you brought to us over the course of last year, most of the first half of the year, didn't cause any, any alarm or confusion on our part.
I like to have everything in balance. So I'll always, I do, I do adjustments probably every other week. You know, just working with the team, figuring out where things are. Sometimes things do get charged to the wrong account and reclassify it. And things change, obviously, throughout the course of the year.
What's the audit schedule?
We had a preliminary audit, the beginning of last month. And then we, they'll come back probably, don't quote me on this, but, you know, before the new year. We actually, last year, which I've never been part of a district that did not have a management letter, which means the, they had no findings, which less than ten percent of districts had that. And that is kudos to the team that was in place when I got here.
I thought they stayed here until they could write one.
Yeah, they couldn't find anyone, so, which is Well, Ian, Ian does, as you know, two, at least two end of year reports per year. And he al, he also used to go out and help other districts with it. So he's done like forty of these. So he, he's got it down pat.
Great. That's good to know.
And the good news is that we've already, we filed this year's report already. The state didn't allow any extensions to anybody anymore, which is good news for everybody. So that's been submitted and that will streamline our processes going forward. We hit a little feedback last year that with E and D at the region, you've gotta have a approved closing of the prior year. So we'll be avoiding any of those timeline conclusions.
One of the things we will have and most districts do have, we did submit the end of year report, but we will have some addendums. We're still waiting for some information from the town as well as a special leg. But, but we, every district has addendums that they want.
And you said one of your goals is cleaning up the chart of accounts. So that means that we will have less crosswalk items at the end of the year.
Well, you'd say that, but DESI
In theory, but then they change things also, right?
They moved, one of the biggest things
So you're always chasing a moving target.
Like, they moved all the technology, pretty much the capital technology to the one thousand functions. So that, that is one of our biggest ones that we're going to be doing. And we don't, we won't necessarily lose the history, cuz we'll have a crosswalk of our old chart of accounts. But we lose some history.
Yeah.
So, but yeah.
So it can suddenly, sorry, just to, it can suddenly look like district leadership and administration has grown significantly because really that category has been put underneath.
When you say all of technology, that includes hardware or software?
Uh, I believe so.
Technical services?
Yeah.
So everything that we have for the buildings?
Most of the capital ones.
Understandings is all gonna come under that line.
Yeah. I don't know if software, I, I'll get that for you, but I know that the, the bigger ones, the hardware is more to a district-wide technology, which is gonna go to the one thousand functions.
And that's effective now, fiscal twenty?
Um, believe it or not, it was nineteen.
And that'll break out into a number of one hundred functions, I would assume, right? Within the one thousands. Your expectation is that the adjustments year to year will probably
Go down.
Not be as dramatic?
It won't, won't be as dramatic.
As you go through this process.
Right. It won't be as dramatic. Every line, literally every line will most likely have some sort of adjustment. Especially as it's still going through negotiations. Every line will. But I don't like to let it ride. I like to, if I have a salary line, my encumbrance, I like to zero it out and move that oneies to either contingency line or one that is over.
Can I stop how many negative lines he has? His stress test is so true. Like, will you go balance that budget?
I know.
Don't let the light turn.
It was literally, it was overnight. It was overnight that I, my stress level would weigh in. I'd balance the budget, so.
Only that would work for the rest of us.
One of the lessons, a lesson I did learn, and I gotta remind myself of it last year. I really can't start the budget process in July and August because there's so many changes. I was going nuts. It was stressing me out, so.
Yeah. Better to just start once you have the information.
Once you have, really after the first payroll. I can get everything ready, but wouldn't, it changes so much.
Right. Makes sense. That's great learning. And boy, thank you for the path that you've brought us on in terms of budgeting. I mean, this is, it's
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're in a really healthy place. If you're, the regions landed in a really healthy place too as we close FY nineteen and
That's great.
Just able to kind of take a breath and build a really solid budget for FY twenty-one. That the goal would be to bring in a reasonable number while maintaining the stability where we've been building. So, yeah, it feels really good. I'm sleeping better too. I won't come home, deny that.
When you balance the budget, you bring down both of the Terrific. Any other questions here? Great. Thank you for doing it. Okay, we have succeeded in being more efficient tonight. We're gonna keep that up. Anything else before we close up? Then I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you.